... the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
... ruler, the universe, sovereign who raises up and brings down nations and people. And we remember who we are, the nation of God. That if we have accepted Christ, then our saving, we are your mother. Will you invite to come and confess with the throne of Christ? It's a mercy. And Lord, I appeal to you this morning for our nation, in this time of evil reigning, we pray that you would powerfully act. And we know that you use people to act, but we pray that you would overturn those forces of evil, but also Lord, work within our hands to bring us back to the covenant of obedience. I pray this morning for our commissioners, give them wisdom, give them courage to make the decisions which are the right decisions based upon the Constitution of the United States and what is for the wealth of the people. Thank you for your conduct, for the way that they have led wisely, put our county back into a very good position. Thank you that you will work in their lives for their progression and progress. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity we have, come before you, fly off to you for your mercy, for your power, to be working in our midst. We pray for all of our first responders in the county. We pray for a military young woman who fled his home. We pray your protection, we pray your wisdom together, to do what is right, to obey the consequences, to not do better still. Thank you, Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. So the time is now nine oh three. Amanda, could you call the roll, please? Here.
Here.
All right, first item business we have is approval of the agenda, and I understand we do have one change.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with one exception, and that being take out item G two, which is relates to, yeah, an update on the transportation master plan. It's not quite ready yet.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the elimination of discussion item G two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item we have is the consent agenda, the motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Elected officials, department heads and staff reports. Ellis, did you have anything first today? Sherry? Okay. Sam?
Commissioners, Sam Albert, County Manager, a couple items. One of the things that we are, we've had an opportunity to do is with the new finance manager now in place, to sit down and streamline and make some changes to how we report vouchers and variance reports. Vouchers going forward will be the vouchers that require B O C C signature. Those are in the amount of $300,000 or more. And then we will also print the same list of payments for publication that we do so that you and the citizens all have a complete list of payments being made. The second piece of that is the variance reports. We will start those in March sometime with the February variance for year-to-date. Just another point of item is that the audit has started, and they're starting to pull information for the 2020 fiscal year, and we are on track to get that audit completed on time. The second piece of business I wanted to touch base with is the 2020 census. As you know, every 10 years, we do census nationwide. Albert County put together a small group internally to help facilitate the information about the census going out, and our target goal is to do better than we did in 2010. And we did exceed that. Albert County was actually sixth in the state as far as the total response, self-response rate at 75.4 percent, and in 2010, we were only at 75.2 percent. The internet piece of the census, the new rollout of being able to respond via the internet went very well. Census Department is still consolidating numbers, and as we've talked about before, there's been a delay in the redistricting, and data won't be available until September 30th. It's a nationwide problem, and the Albert County clerk is very aware of that as we look at how that's going to roll out for the upcoming elections, the precinct and the redistricting information. So that's, there'll be more to come on that. Census is still going through some final quality to control checks on their data, so they are not ready to release the numbers yet, and they're still looking at not only Albert County data, but Colorado data and nationwide data, so there's still some ongoing effort. But that count effort that we put out is complete at this point in time.
Still looking, it's towards the end of September is what I heard.
30th of September is the best date that they will give us to get that information.
Right after ballots have gone out. The clerk is busy with other things. Any questions? No, I'm fine. Yeah, I'm just on the vouchers one. I know, I think you told me the other day also that part of the concern of publishing all the vouchers as part of the packet was some of those could include direct payments to families in need and ensure that their privacy was protected.
Absolutely. There's confidential information in those, then we keep that protected.
Thank you. Christina?
Morning Commissioners, Christina Stanton, Director of CDS. Did get a request last night in my email for extension having to do with Delbert Hill subdivision improvement agreement, so that'll be on the next agenda. The agreement was originally dated March 9th, 2020, so it will be one day after the one-year period.
What did they request then?
A year, yeah.
Are they requesting an extension or?
Yes, they're requesting an extension of a year. So I just wanted to let you know that that would be on the next agenda.
Alrighty, next item we have is citizen public comment. This is comment not related to items that may be on the agenda later. Do we have anybody that's interested in making public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. Alrighty, discussion items. First item up we've got is the 2020 annual library report and trustee bylaws. Tim, it's good to see you again. And we did.
Can you turn the mic on?
Oh, yeah, just so we can, they can hear you on the remote, yeah. Yeah, so we, just so you know, we did receive the report and bylaws.
Yeah, pretty cut and dried. We, we spent less money than we made, so we put a lot of money in savings. We paid off our Elizabeth facility as of late 2019, so now we're working toward building funds for capital improvements. Those are really the broad spoke, broad strokes in terms of any details the public might want. You can find the report on our website, or it's published as part of the B O C C packet. So, any questions in regard to the report?
There were some bylaw changes?
Um, I'd have to go back and look, but there might, I don't think there were last year. I think there were the year before.
So this is just a copy of current?
Yeah. But I just forwarded to you anyhow.
Just, as you save towards future capital improvement, what do you envision in the next, say, five years or so, or have you really?
Tentative plans are to, and we try to keep open to possibilities. Tentative plans are definitely the Elizabeth facility warehouse space, so there's a lot of vacant space back there. Once we acquire enough funds for matching, matching funds for grants, which is typically about 50 to 60 percent, then we can start applying for some of those capital grants, not only through DOLA, but through things like the Gates Foundation and that. I'm estimating it'll probably be about four to eight million to renovate that facility in full. Right now, we're also looking at the northwest corner of the county just because of all the growth that's occurring there, so that's, that's, that's a high priority. But we also care a lot about our agricultural and rural citizens, so we're always looking at potential partnerships with schools and things like that to try and get in small facilities at schools, et cetera.
Just for the folks that might be listening, it was a little unclear. That was four two eight million, not forty-eight million?
Um, four, four two eight million, not forty-eight.
I was sure that's what I'd heard.
Yeah, four two eight million is.
And I guess just the other, just in general, I know you had to be closed or curbside service much of the year.
Um, yeah.
Services continued well or?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you'd think we'd see an uptick in eBooks and audiobooks use and remote services, so good news about that is we've been forced to adapt to a certain extent, so we've gotten accustomed to doing online storytimes and things like that that we can use for digital content that our patrons can access anytime. Of course, we're really looking forward to going back and doing programs and things like that.
I appreciate it.
So are you open to public in and out at all right now?
We are, uh huh. So we're limiting to eight at this point in time, which we haven't even hit that threshold in terms of people that want to come in, but.
That's eight at a time?
Yeah, mhm. And we're not currently doing programs or meetings, but again, as vaccinations become more prevalent, we're looking forward to bringing folks back in for those things.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment or input on that? Seeing none, okay. We'll move on to the next item. Said we were pushing off the update on the master transportation plan. I think the public input was closing up this, this weekend, I believe, so they wanted to have those updates for us, so. Next one we have was authority to move in to negotiate right-of-ways for cul-de-sac agreements.
It doesn't look like we've got anyone from Roden Bridge here at Public Works, so I can definitely comment on that. We are looking at two separate locations for the installation of large cul-de-sacs, which would provide an opportunity for our road grader operators or heavy equipment operators to turn around in inclement weather. That would allow them to better maintain those areas. And my understanding is the areas where these are, where we're looking at putting these cul-de-sacs, there's not a good opportunity for that size of equipment, which is utilized for maintaining those areas, to do so now. So that has been something we've been looking at. We are doing the due diligence necessary in order to have the meets and bounds and property description for whatever agreements we enter into. We're simply asking the board to provide for the authority necessary to negotiate the requirements for acquiring that, that property for those two cul-de-sacs that can help the county, help its citizens. So, right now, it's, it's simply a discussion item. I do anticipate that in our next meeting, that will be an action or a consent item, but that's really the, the information that I can provide now, and if there's additional questions, I can try to answer those questions.
Just a quick one, is it, just to discuss two cul-de-sacs, or is it to have some kind of a instruction that if there's other cul-de-sacs, that they'd be given the authority to negotiate those also?
We're only looking at these two areas right now, so that's, that's what it's limited to. Essentially, it's, it's, there may already be a level of authority to enter into this. It is just simply, you know, bringing this before the boards first, so you know what's going on. Secondly, for any additional authority to, to enter into that agreement, and I suspect we probably will be putting this on action items. There is a map that I know that we can utilize just to kind of highlight where these areas are, so that, that can be a more in-depth conversation at our next meeting when we're discussing that.
Sorry. Next item up we have is Spring Valley Ranch subdivision improvement agreements, and these relate to filing five and segments of County Road 13, 174, and 178.
So as far as what we're looking at here, this is related to the Spring Valley hearing that we recently had. The minutes are pretty substantive in relation to that, and I know that Mr. Marshall is here to discuss this and answer any questions with regard to that as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments beforehand or?
There's actually three separate SIAs. There's one for filing five, one for County Roads 13 and 174, and one for 178. And as I think you're familiar, SIAs typically spell out the terms and conditions that we agreed to construct improvements. It talks about the two-year warranty period, the eventual acceptance of the county's, county final acceptance of the improvements once we've gotten through the two-year warranty period and any warranty work that we have to do. We do have to post surety based on construction cost estimates. So it's a pretty standard agreement. Our, our attorney worked with the county's attorney to get to the, the execution version of these documents, so I think they've been vetted by both the county and our side. We're in agreement with the terms and conditions that are in all three of the agreements, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, just in the packet, we got the, for the sureties, do we have the construction costs identified or?
The construction cost estimates for all three of the county roads were submitted quite some time ago, and, and were signed off on by Sean O'Hern in Public Works. The surety for the three county roads has already been posted, and the, on filing five, I'll explain, a little explanation on that. We do have two builders that are going to build in filing five. It's going to be developed in two phases. There's a total of 350 lots that are approved in the plat. It will be developed, and the first phase is going to be about approximately 200 lots, and the second phase will be 150 lots. And the builders are sharing the, the lots on a 50/50 basis. So Phase One, which we hope to start here in the next two or three months, will be the first 200 lots, and the builders will be putting up the surety, they'll be building the infrastructure, which is what we've done on previous plats like filing four and filing three.
Now, if I read those agreements right, you wouldn't be able to get more than seven building permits until the roads were?
Actually, actually six.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to, we have to have everything in place, and we have to have the, the county roads accepted before we can get the seventh permit. And the purpose for that was to allow the builders to build some model home, homes while the roads were being finished. And the agreement with the fire district is that as long as we have an all-weather surface and the fire district can get to the, to the homes that are being built, they're willing to allow the building permits to be pulled for the models.
Assuming all of these agreements are agreed to, how long do you think it'll take to get the, the roads done?
The contractor that we have retained is quoting us between six and seven months.
And the surety is posted, you said?
Yes.
Oh, is that three separate, because there's three separate agreements? Well, that, or is it, are they all combined in terms?
The surety for the county roads is one, one surety bond, and it's, it's in the neighborhood of $11 million, something like that, 10-point, 10-point something, I think. The, the SIA for filing five, again, those cost estimates will be submitted to the county before we post the surety and obviously approved. And then once the surety's up, that's when we can have the pre-construction meeting and start construction.
To me, it was relatively straightforward, that surety.
It's, it's, you know, it's, the subdivision improvement agreements are generally a fairly standard agreement, and you just, there's usually specific conditions that, that pertain to each individual SIA, so that's where the, that's where the differences come in from one SIA to the next.
I know the.
One, one thing I would point out, I'm not sure which drafts that you guys are looking at, but they did have the signature, the signature block on, two of them was incorrect. It had ALF Spring Valley Ranch, LLC is the, is the developer, and it should be Spring Valley Land Investments.
These are the corrected ones. At the hearing, I know one of the conditions, at least on the, for the final design of 178, was to continue to work a little bit with.
Yeah, we've.
Station and Carlson Ranch folks.
We've, we've, actually, I spoke to Chris Hatton after the meeting two weeks ago, and Sean O'Hern, the county's civil engineer, has been talking to Chris fairly regularly. We have, we've supplied him with the, with several documents, including the, the last version of the County Road 178 plans. We, we did review Chris's 44-page submittal that he, his comment letter that he submitted, and we responded, we responded to his comments on both road design, safety, and drainage. Those were his two primary, primary issues. Chris, Chris is a civil engineer, and he does have some drainage experience. He, his primary discipline, though, is he works a lot in the mining industry, and he does a lot of geotechnical work, but he does have drainage experience, so we, I think we professionally responded to his concerns, and we did review our plans. The County Road 178 plans that were submitted and were actually recommended for approval several months ago meet all the codes. The drainage works fine. We did revisit some of the things that Chris brought up, and we did, we've proposed some solutions that enhance it and make this, make the drainage system even better. It was, it met code before, and it still meets code, but it's, we've increased the size of a couple of pipes and just enhanced the, enhanced the design. So Chris is, Chris was out of town last week. He and I have been exchanging voicemails and emails. I guess he was in Arizona. On Friday, he texted me and told me he was on his way from Tucson to Phoenix, so I'm not quite sure what he's up to, but he's, you know, we, we agreed that we would work with him and that we would give him some time to review. Again, our plans do meet all the codes and all the specifications of the county, the state, and the federal government when it comes to, you know, the design, the, the mapping of the floodplain, and the Corps of Engineers for a, for a permit.
You have a building permit yet for the roads?
We haven't, we haven't applied for any building permit yet. We were waiting to get through this process today.
So we had these on for discussion today. I'd kind of like to get from staff at least the confirmation of the sureties. We can take these to action at the next, our next meeting if that. We'll be ready to move forward. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Yes, ma'am?
So.
If we could get your, just.
Oh, I'm an old teacher, you'll be able to hear me. So, a couple of things.
If you could hear me, your name and address, please, ma'am.
Candace Heddila, 446 Meadow Station Circle. And it is hard to hear you, just so you know, for the people who are not here, it's very hard to hear you. This is just related to other developments like, I mean, there's absolutely no reason for anybody to say anything about Mr. Marshall. In fact, I'm not sure why you bother with the surety, because anything he wants to do is fine. But for future proposals like this one, is there any chance that we could have these meetings, and especially the, the planning, the land use meetings, in the evening? Because there are a lot of people I know would like to come who have to work, and, you know, clearly, cost is not an issue, we can see from this giveaway to your friend and developer, Mr. Marshall. So is there a way that we can get these meetings in the evening so that more people can participate?
Is that your comment, ma'am?
The question. I know you answer questions during this time.
That question was actually answered during the last hearing that you were in.
Well, we're asking it again and asking you to consider it again, because a lot of people are very interested in participating more.
Okay, we'll consider it then.
Yeah, and when would we hear back on those considerations?
We've considered it.
And when might that be?
Can't tell you, ma'am.
Okay, well, gosh, thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, thank you. Moving on to action items. Got one item, it's approval of the February 10th, 2021 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the February 10th, 2021 minutes as presented on this test vote committee minutes. I just want to tell you I'm in my mid-seventies and reading these minutes, I follow.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February 10th minute meeting and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Board planning. Okay, we got two items that looks like they were moved to the next meeting, that would be the extension, consider the. meeting. That would be the extension, consider the extension of the Delbert Hills filing and the potential approval of cul-de-sac agreements. And I guess the third would be consideration for approval of, of the SIA, the final approval for the SIA's. Do you have anything else?
So Commissioners, we are anxiously awaiting to hear what the new stimulus package may do for Albert County in particular, but every county and municipality is waiting for the same information. We don't exactly know. We've seen a draft formula that will give us a potential number, but it's still in discussion at the federal level. We do know the way the bill is written, that the money will come straight to the county and not go through the state to be dispersed on a reimbursement type or an allocation type of basis. So we will have a little, we'll be following the federal guidance instead of what we did with the past, which was try to de-conflict federal and state guidance, which was kind of a hang-up for us. So, as soon as we get some numbers, I know that there, there's a potential vote scheduled in the House this week on that. But again, I'm not going to predict when the, when the Congress will get through that.
Alrighty. So with that, it's 9:32, and we're in recess until 1:00 PM. We'll be reconvening at the fairgrounds to consider a rezone application. Thank you.